We'll now call a common council meeting of November 2nd, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Duqueyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here. I would everybody please rise for the pledge. Mike, you want to start us off?
Sure. The pledge will be to issue the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That'll get us to the approval of minutes of October 19th, 2021. Everybody please take a look. And when you're satisfied, there's no errors, omissions, corrections, or discussion, we'll entertain a motion. Kirkowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of October 19th, 2021. Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Duqueyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Item four is recognition and its consideration of a resolution for gratitude to Barbara Guckenberg, our retiring city treasurer. Catherine, would you please read that in the record?
Certainly. Resolution number 12270-110221. Gratitude to Barbara Ann Guckenberg, retiring city treasurer. Whereas as a result of the April 1st, 2003 election, Barbara Guckenberg was elected the City of Oak Creek's third city treasurer and began her employment on May 1st, 2003. And whereas Barbara Guckenberg was reelected seven subsequent times before charter ordinance number 16 changed the position of city treasurer from elected to appointed beginning May 1st, 2021. And whereas, in addition to her city treasurer duties, in 2012, Barbara Guckenberg began supervising the assessor's office, providing oversight to the city value assessment for all taxpayers. And whereas the city treasurer, Barb was responsible for all city, state, school, county, special district, and technical college property taxes, the management and security of all monies belonging to the city. And whereas, as part of the yearly tax roll process, Barb Guckenberg was responsible for the calculation of the tax rates and credits, preparing real estate and personal property tax bills, managing tax collection and the payment processes, and preparing tax apportionment to the other taxing districts and the final settlement to Milwaukee County. And whereas, in addition to her duties with the city, Barb Guckenberg earned certified municipal treasurer of Wisconsin recognition from the University of Wisconsin Green Bay Municipal Institute, and was a member of the Municipal Treasurers Association of Wisconsin, where she held numerous boarding committee appointments, the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada, the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association, and the South Suburban Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Barb Guckenberg served on the city's finance committee, the recently created Personnel and Finance Committee, and the Oak Creek Public Library Foundation, where she served as treasurer from its establishment in 2012 through 2017. Whereas, over her countless years of service, Barb Guckenberg has witnessed and participated in the growth of the City of Oak Creek. And whereas Barbara Guckenberg is retiring effective October 29th, 2021, after over 18 years of service to the City of Oak Creek, and will finally be able to take off her city treasurer hat to spend more time with her husband Glenn, their four daughters and son-in-laws, five grandchildren, her siblings, and countless friends. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council for and on behalf of the citizens of City of Oak Creek, that sincere congratulations be extended to Barbara Guckenberg for her dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek, and that the best wishes for health and happiness be extended to her and her family and her well-deserved retirement. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Barbara Guckenberg, passed and adopted the second day of November, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine. Councilman, any words for Barb? Andrew?
I think the staff in the room would agree with me that there wasn't a detail that ever slipped by Barb, and I think that's exactly the type of individual you want managing your treasury. So the taxpayers were very well-served, and I think that Barb's most important job in life has always been mom and grandma, so I think she's going to be enjoying her retirement very much, and we wish her well, and we'll miss her here around the office.
I would agree. Barb was an integral part of what the city does here, and one of the more important things, and probably the most unpopular thing, is collection of taxes. And always rolled around this time of year, and you know, Barb made sure that things went the way they were supposed to go, popular or not, and she'd be out here to answer the questions, and she did her job, and she did it very well for a long time, which you can see by her election rate going forward. Unquestionably, we had a great person in place doing that job, and to Barb's credit, she helped Sarah, who assumed that position at last council meeting, prepare for that spot. So you know, when I talk about the strength of Oak Creek, it's always about our management and preparing the next person to continue on the great service that everybody received, and Barb was no exception to that. So Barb, on behalf of myself, the entire common council, citizens of Oak Creek, we want to thank you for your dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek over all these years. So, long and happy retirement.
Motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, move to approve resolution 12270-110221, gratitude to Barbara Guckenberg, retiring city treasurer. Kuzikowski, second.
Oh, call him.
Alderman, Duqueyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye. And the next is under recognition is a mayoral proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which will be occurring November 27th, 2021. Catherine, if you would, please.
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation, Small Business Saturday, November 27th, 2021. Whereas the government of Oak Creek, Wisconsin celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in their private sector in the United States. And whereas, 88% of United States consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic, and 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas, 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so. And whereas, 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped in a local business because of social media recommendation. And whereas, the City of Oak Creek supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Daniel Bickevich, Mayor of Oak Creek, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year, dated the second day of November, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine. Council, any comments, Small Business Saturday? I'm just gonna say a couple of words. I was asked to do this proclamation, and small businesses really are an integral part of our economy. We need to support them. The money you put into these local businesses usually go to support initially that family, not stockholders, not big boxes, nothing against them, but they need this. You usually find more unique personalized products, probably a more unique and personalized service. Some of you even own small businesses here or have. So we urge you not only to visit a small business here in Oak Creek, and there are many amongst us, but if you can find your way anywhere in the South Shore or anywhere in the area and support that small business, it would be greatly appreciated, especially after the last 18 months that these small businesses have endured the pandemic. So, no action is needed on that, more just informational. So, thank you for reading that, Catherine. Appreciate that. That'll get us to our public hearings. The first one, item six is to consider a request submitted by Gary Hoff to rezone the property at 9571 South 15th Avenue from RS3 Single Family and A1 Limited Agricultural to A1 Limited Agricultural, and there'll be no change to floodway or flood fringe. Catherine, would you officially read that in, please?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Gary Hoff to rezone the property at 9571 South 15th Ave. from RS3 Single Family Residential and A1 Limited Agricultural to A1 Limited Agricultural, no change to FW Floodway and FF Flood Fringe Districts. Applicant is Gary Haft, property owner Gary Haft and Lynn Nevers Haft. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is October 6th, 2021.
Doug, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing under a request to rezone a portion of the property at 9571 South 15th Avenue from RS3 Single Family Residential to A1 Limited Agricultural. The applicant and the owner of the property is requesting this change. Per his email and narrative, he intends to use the property for agricultural purposes. Now, as you can see from the screen, the property is defined by the red hatch. It's a very irregularly shaped parcel that is heavily impacted by environmental corridor and wetlands, and is not serviced, nor is it anticipated to be serviced by public utilities at this point in time. So the A1 Limited Agricultural District really was designated to retain lands in agriculture or to preserve those lands that may not be ready for urban development and the public infrastructure that supports it at this point in time. So the request to rezone the property is consistent in that respect with the comprehensive plan and with the intent of the A1 Agricultural zoning district. Again, just to note again, that the property cannot be served by water and sewer at this point in time. Again, the property is a little bit irregular in the sense that there's a private roadway which goes through it to serve other properties, and that, you know, it complicates things. But after rid of the matter, the proposal is to rezone it to agricultural, and it is consistent with the intent of the district. And the planning commission, in their review of this, also found that and recommended to the council that the rezoning be approved. This is a public hearing. Anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to rezone the property at 9571 South 15th Avenue, please fill out an appearance form. When requested, proceed to the podium, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, this is a public hearing. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak, name and address the podium, please.
Hello, your counsel?
Oh, whoop. On the microphone, please.
Hello, everybody. 3203 East Ryan Road, southeast corner of Section 26th. My biggest concern is like tax.
Excuse me, sir, could you just give us your name, please?
Name and address.
Martin Quasney, 3203 East Ryan Road, southeast corner of Section 26th.
Gotcha. Proceed with the question.
My biggest question is how it's gonna work with tax purposes? You guys are gonna vet you why, I know you wanna run city sewer water all the way up to Highway 32 via Fitzsimmons eventually? I know you talked about it 25 years ago. My property, I have city sewer water, and at the time I was told I would be responsible for 252 feet paying for that. So my biggest question is how does this work with the taxing? When they do wanna come through with the city sewer water, is this person gonna be exempt, or?
I'm gonna first turn the first part of that question over to Doug, and then Mike, maybe you can help us on the sewer a little bit. I know Water Department isn't here, but you're probably most knowledgeable on that.
Absolutely. The use, the way a property is assessed, really, at the end of the day, really doesn't take, it takes into account the use of the property and not necessarily the zoning. So if the property is used for agricultural, and if the property owner files the appropriate paperwork, they can get the assessment based on that use. I think what you're referring to is probably their assessment policy, which is something that's completely different from the rezoning request, and I must confess, I'm not an expert on the assessment policy. So with that in mind, I know, Mike, if you can address some of those questions?
So, yes, I think that we'd have to have a little more information. Now, assert sounds like that you are on city water currently, so it must have some contiguous location adjacent to property lines.
However, I have 417 feet from Ryan Road to the back, which is why I'm here today, and I have 252 feet that is eventually gonna be able to be developable, once they do run through with city sewer water. At the time, 25 years ago, I was gonna be responsible for like about approximately 33,000 of that money, and all I'm asking for is a fair shake. If somebody is gonna, I don't know what they're gonna grow, are they gonna, when are they gonna grow there?
Just to lend some background to it, so at the planning meeting, the applicant came in, and really what he intends to do is keep it naturally green, butterfly habitat, stuff like that. He intends really to do nothing with it, maybe if he can get the proper permits and what have you, ponds, something like that, but as they said, there's environmental issues there, but he'll leave, he doesn't plan to develop any of it. I guess that's the bottom line.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. The land's been for sale for a long time, and it's nothing but just concrete and junk fillback in there. So I can understand why nobody would wanna buy it and try to put it anyplace on there, especially when it doesn't have city sewer water. However, eventually, there's gonna be city sewer water going through there, and will this person that say they get their grant to go to agricultural, and they get by with a tax break for all these years, and then all of a sudden, city sewer water goes through there, I pay my fair share just like everybody else, and then this person puts in a proposal to go back to residential or something, and what is the whole thing? Is this a big tax break? Is that why he wants to change it, or?
No, obviously, you know, he, and he said, if he's gonna keep it natural, he doesn't wanna pay on the current zoning. He was upfront about that, but he does intend to keep it A1 and natural. So while it's that way, he'll do it. If he ever decided, keep in mind, Marty, if he ever decided to develop that property, he would have to clean it up, you know, and get all that, whatever's in there, out, and apparently, it's not, there's some foundry things in there too as well, foundry sand. It'd be very costly. I don't know, again, it's not my cup of tea, that's probably for somebody definitely more skilled at saying if it's developable, but the talk at planning was, it's really not a desirable plot to develop at all.
Well, I mean, I guess, good to the point of the question, being the property owner, much like any property owner, would be responsible for whatever assessments per the policy that was in place at the time the water and sewer was extended, whether it's tomorrow or 10 years from now.
He does have the right to ask for a rezon.
Yes.
So it's a whole thing of tax incentive, why he wants to change it over, or is because it's not selling, or?
I think I would direct those questions of the owner to the owner, and I don't want to represent on his behalf.
I thought you are here doing that.
You know, when he came through planning, he basically is planning on retiring, and he just plans to kind of work and putz around on the A1, whatever he's gonna do out there. He seemed to be a nature guy.
I don't see a problem with that. But for me, I have city sewer water on my property, and if I ever wanna get any, right now to tax this on that property behind my house is not bad. It's doable. I don't see, I would be very expensive for him either if he wants to tax it, but when it does go through, is what I'm asking, because they're gonna, you guys are gonna want me to pay my share, and...
City attorney's gonna make a comment, I think.
Just trying to pull this together a little bit. I mean, this is a different issue for this public hearing tonight. It's not trying to not answer a question, but I'm just trying to help you to the extent that there might be some future special assessment, if that's what you're alluding to in terms of water and sewer coming through in the future, there would be notice, there would be a public hearing to any interested parties and properties that are benefited by those services. So it's a very separate and distinct issue from tonight. I think that you certainly have made your comments for the record for the decision that the council is going to make if tonight on this one issue, how it might affect you in the future, and I guess procedurally, I would just say, if there's going to be some consideration for a special assessment, there would be a hearing before the council, there would be notice, so there's a process that would have to be gone through. So if that helps at all, that's not...
Well, sort of. So, see, okay, see, everything goes through, and this gentleman gets his request that he wants, and then five years from now, city sewer water wants to roll through here. Now, is he gonna be exempt from helping pay out for this year? Because that's half the problem we have right now, getting it up to 32.
It's only a property, it makes no difference with respect to the assessment policy.
Just trying to separate the issues, and like I said, from my perspective, not trying to not answer your question, but I think also it's hard to predict what's gonna happen in the future, and I think as our Director of Community Development said, we gotta see what the circumstances are at the time, and like any development in any property where those services are being run to or where they're being requested, I think it really depends on what the nature of what it is. We'll have to take a look at that, so.
All right, well...
Future will tell.
Yeah, on my point, behalf though, it's kind of a gamble, 'cause I don't know, you know, if I gotta shell out for city sewer water, it's gonna force me to subdivide one of my properties back there to help pay for that, and I would do that if I had to, but if somebody else is gonna skate on paying for this, or it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be good for me, or it wouldn't be good for any of my neighbors.
Again, the zoning won't affect it. As our Director of Community Development said, it's...
So then he's not gonna build back there, then, period?
That is what he said, and if he decided to do it, he'd have to change his zoning right on back, and then he'd have to come through this entire process all over again.
So is agricultural, consists of having a barn over there, or?
No, at this point in time, he'd have to go through processes to even see if he could put up a structure.
Agricultural zoning doesn't allow agricultural structures.
But based on the land.
But based on the presence of environmental corridors, floodplains, wetlands.
It was gonna be, it was gonna be a task for him to do that if he wanted to do a pole barn.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Marty.
We'll now make the second call. Anybody wishing to speak? Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and go on to item seven, which is consideration of the ordinance rezoning the property at 9571 South 15th from RS3 Single Family to A1 Limited Agricultural and A1 Limited Agricultural, no change to the floodway and flood fringe. Rich?
Mayor Dan, thank you so much. Rich Duqueyak, 3rd District, Alderman. Prior to the planning commission meeting of September 28th, I did have the opportunity to speak with the property owners, Kerry and Lynn, they're in attendance tonight, and just to get a feel for what it was that they had planned to do with the property. And their conversation with me was consistent with what they presented to our staff, and I think, Doug, you and Kerry both saw what their planned use or intentions were with that property. I did have some contact from nearby residents as well with concerns about what was going to take place on that property, and honestly, I was upfront with those residents and said, I didn't have the answers to their questions, and I invited both the property owner and the residents that had the concerns to attend the planning commission meeting, and all did. And I wanna thank Doug, you, and Kerry, and Mayor Dan for really explaining that this probably is the best use. This, Doug, you and I know, this is an incredibly interesting piece of property that is very challenged for any type of residential development. So just keeping this, this plot of land, green space, and I think we're all in agreement that that's the best route to take for right now, and with the information that was presented at planning commission meeting, all of the commissioners were in agreement, and I think that their rezon request, if I recall, was approved unanimously. So again, I have no issues with that rezon request for the property, and that's my two cents worth.
Anyone else? Steve?
Alderman Kirkowski, 1st District. I was reading the planning commission notes, and I guess I wanna just give credit to the property owners for being forthwith by saying that it's not buildable. They wanted, they didn't want anybody to build on it because it's not buildable, and they're aware of the environmental issues, and they're gonna plant, try and bring up the elevations, bring in fresh dirt, they said, plant apple and peach trees and native plants. I mean, not too many parcels of property are gonna go into that type of environment. Usually, we're eliminating those environments and building, you know, commercial structures or houses or residential subdivisions, but, and again, he was very, very honest and said that, you know, change it to agriculture so he's not paying so much in taxes, and I guess, you know, if I realized I had a piece of property that couldn't be buildable, and turned into agriculture and saved a few bucks on taxes, I don't see why that's such a big deal. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Saying none, motion on seven, please.
Okay. Duqueyak moved to approve ordinance number 3019, rezoning the property at 9571 South 15th Avenue from RS3 Single Family Residential and A1 Limited Agricultural to A1 Limited Agricultural, no change to the FW Floodway and FF Flood Fringe Districts.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duqueyak.
Aye. Under new business, item eight is consideration of a motion to approve a plan of finance for $6,305,000 general obligation with funding bonds and $2,590,000 tax but general obligation promissory notes. Max, you wanna take it?
Thank you. Max Gagan, Assistant City Administrator Controller. So before you tonight is the plan of finance, as well as two parameters resolutions, and the plan of finance is to cover two debt issuances, the first being $6,305,000 of general obligation with funding bonds. That is true of fund promissory notes that were issued in 2013 related to lake fund improvements, specifically for Lake Vista Park. So those do have a call date of December 1st of this year, and we have structured the amortization in such a way to follow that multi-year debt service levy reduction strategy that was presented at our common council budget workshop early October. And then the second issuance is $2,590,000, really for two purposes. First, for the purchase of Lot 1 in Oakview Business Park, and that's part of our TID closure and donation strategy, and that purchase would be contingent upon approval of TID amendments for TID 8 that still have to be approved by the common council and then the joint review board. And then the second purpose is to pay off principal and accrued interest on a loan to West Park. It's related to debt service coverage for tax increment shortfall in TID 11 in 2016, and that's $430,000. And with us tonight, we do have Justin Fisher, who is the Director of Public Finance at Baird, and I'll have him come up and explain the plan of finance and parameters resolutions in more details.
Thanks, Max. Great to see everyone. Well, Max did a kind of the my job right there, explaining everything, so I'll keep this pretty short and sweet tonight, but just to give you a quick market update, municipal interest rates are still at historic lows. You're seeing it still all over the place, but what we're seeing is the inflationary pressures. We're not seeing the rates that we received a year ago. You know, we're seeing that slow and steady increase, but when you look at it from a historical perspective, we're still at the historical low point. So it's a good time to be taking advantage of the market, and we'll see what the future holds, but at this particular time, we're still at that historical low point. So in front of you, the presentation, I'll run through this, the timeline, the structure, and then we'll briefly talk about the details of the financings. But if you look at page two, the timeline here is to consider the plan of finance and parameters resolutions tonight. This ultimately gives the authority for the sign-off of the bond and note sales to administrator and assistant administrator, ultimately giving us the flexibility to go to the marketplace when we're ready, one, and when timing is optimal. You know, the interest rates, the market constantly moves day to day, and so, you know, as we've done in the past... And so, you know, a- as we've done in the past, I'll, I'll be in constant communication with Max and Andrew saying, you know, on this particular day. Uh, this, this probably makes sense to, to try to go into the, the bond marketplace. So that's, that's what this is. Uh, we've already started the official statement process, kind of getting that put together. If you, if you recall, that's kind of like the stock prospectus for this bond offering. That's what's sent out to potential investors and so forth to review and, uh, submit their bids. Uh, the bond rating process, that, that's next week. The, the city has a double A two bond rate, bond credit rating that's, that's been stable for, for many years here now. And I, I would continue that to, to, to maintain the double A two bond rating on this issuance as well. Because it's strong finances, continued strong growth, good fund balance, et cetera. So we'll have that next week. That's Max will participate and probably Andrew will be a, a part of that as well, uh, for that call. Then come early December, that's when we'll start really looking at, uh, when to get into the bond marketplace. Uh, we're targeting kind of that early, uh, December timeframe and then closing late December of two thousand twenty-one. Again, the two issues that Max already described, six million, three hundred and five, this is going to be the tax exempt general obligation refunding bonds. And really the reason we couldn't do this earlier is because as Max alluded to, it has a call feature in there of December one, two thousand twenty-one. Meaning that on that particular day, that's when you can refinance, restructure, et cetera. So we've been kind of waiting for that period of time, and that's why we're bringing it to you tonight. So when that December one hits, we're ready to go and, and take advantage of the, the rates that we're seeing today. Uh, the estimated rate based on that is a one point nine seven, the max parameter would be a three percent. I would anticipate that we would, uh, come in much under the three percent, uh, but that's just again, a parameter. The other one is a two million, five hundred and ninety thousand. This again is taxable, not tax exempt. So that's the distinction between the two, uh, bond issues here. And then the TID eight and TID eleven is what the purposes of that, that particular borrowing is for. Because it's taxable, uh, a little bit higher interest rate, two point one three percent. Again, max parameter of three, three point two five, I would expect us to come in much lower than that when we go to the bond market. So going to the next page, this is the, the detailed plan of finance for the, uh, refinancing of the, the two thousand thirteen issue. As you can see, when you look on the left side of the page, that has what we call, uh, a balloon payment. Um, it has basically a payment of five million, nine hundred thousand dollars. That's what we're looking at, taking advantage of now restructuring that with the, the lower interest rates that we're seeing. Uh, kind of going with what Max said, kind of doing that reduction levy strategy. Um, a- and really this is kind of a back and forth between, uh, Max, myself and Andrew, uh, figuring out what the best solution is. Uh, long-term for, for the city here. So going to page four of the, the presentation, uh, you can see that this is a, lays out the, the different purposes. The TID eight and the TIF number eleven, you can see that we combine it into one borrowing, uh, to keep, to keep, you know, cost of issuance down, et cetera. So the two million, five hundred and ninety thousand is the, the total borrowing. But you can see that we break it out to the right there, the different debt service components related to TID number eight and TID number eleven. And again, that's, that's based on, uh, looking at different cash flow performers and so forth. And figuring out what best fits those TIDs based on the revenues, et cetera, in the TID. So you don't, uh, run into a problem where you're borrowing from the general fund, et cetera. This really is, is a strategic, uh, way to go about it. So with that, I, I entertain any questions?
Justin Alderman, Dukneak, third district. Putting it in simple terms for me, we're going to save a boatload of money, right? By doing the refinance.
Well, well, it's, it's kind of a combination here because eventually you are going to need to restructure that debt. Right? You could wait, um, and, and to twenty twenty-three if you wanted to, really. Uh, but in twenty twenty-three, our rates going to be higher versus where we're seeing them today. I would argue that you have a higher percentage that they're going to go up than where they are right now. But again, I, I don't know.
Okay, so I guess I should refer, reframe that question or statement. There is a good likelihood that if we move quickly, that we'll take advantage of favorable rates and save a lot of money.
Yes, you have bird in the hand and, and you know you're going to get low interest rates.
Thank you.
Questions for Justin?
Thank you.
Easy there. So again, if there's no further discussion or questions, uh, we can move. On eight.
Move to approve the plan of finance for six million, three hundred and five thousand dollars general obligation refunding bonds. And two million, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars taxable general obligation promissory notes.
Oracle, second, all call.
Alderman, Gail. Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
And item nine is consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed. Six million, four hundred thousand dollars general obligation refunding bonds series two thousand twenty-one C. Max, you just want to recap that?
Certainly. So Max Gagan, Assistant City Administrator Comptroller. Uh, so the parameters resolution establishes the parameters for which the city administrator or assistant city administrator comptroller can solve the debt. Uh, really gives us flexibility to enter the market on a date we choose. Uh, of note, you'll see that the power amount is six point four million dollars. So that would accommodate if that interest rate is higher than the projected one point nine seven. Um, and then just speaking to item ten as well, uh, similar structure. Uh, the taxable general obligation promissory note, uh, has a power amount of two point seven million. So again, a little bit higher than what was planted in, or presented in the plan of finance, but that's to accommodate. If there's any, uh, increased interest rate up to that parameter amount of three point two five percent. Again, based off where the market's at today, we don't expect that, but it, by increasing the power amounts for both issues gives us that flexibility to sell.
Uh, thank you, Max. And again, this is nothing out of the ordinary that we haven't done before. So, uh, questions for Max? Okay, seeing none, motion on nine, please.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt resolution number one, two, two, seven, two, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed. Six million, four hundred thousand general obligation refunding bonds series two thousand twenty-one C. Guzekowski, second.
All call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Steve.
And item ten is consideration of the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing the parameters for the sale of not to exceed. Two million, seven hundred thousand taxable general obligation promissory notes series two thousand twenty-one D. Probably the same thing going on in nine, uh, different bond series and amounts, correct, Max? Thank you. Um, if there's nothing for discussion, motion on ten.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt resolution number one, two, two, seven, three, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters. For the sale of not to exceed two mil, two million, seven hundred thousand taxable general obligation promissory notes series two thousand twenty-one D. Guzekowski, second, all call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Steve.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item eleven is a discussion item, uh, and direction to city staff regarding the scheduling of the twenty twenty-two regular combined common council meeting dates. So if everybody take a look at, uh, what's been proposed and, uh, open up discussion on that. Um, just to open the discussion, I had spoken with staff, uh, we did look at the calendar with the dates. Uh, with the early January date, and that's something we've observed in the past. Uh, to give adequate time to staff to prepare coming out of the holiday. And then of course, um, the month of July, um, the fourth is always, uh, questionable. And then also national night out is always the first week of August. That's for consideration as well. There's a few options and we can hala card it as, as we see fit. Um, and of course, if we take all three, we can always call a special meeting as needed. So. Thoughts?
I like the thought of taking all three and if we have to have a special meeting, so be it.
I agree. We did.
I'm good.
Everybody?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I don't think we're going to take action on this. It'll probably be on the next agenda. Uh, but we did need to have the discussion publicly, so I thank you for that. Uh, that will get us to engineering and item twelve. Uh, that is consideration of a resolution authorizing the first contract extension addendum to the city of Oak Creek. Twenty, twenty twenty-one private property maintenance contract. Uh, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. So in, in, back in two thousand twenty, we had, uh, gone out for bids, uh, for. Uh, contractors to, uh, propose, uh, unit costs for, uh, private property cleanup efforts. And Robbie's Grading was awarded the contract at that time, and that, that contract, uh, took us through the end of this year through, through, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The, uh, contract had, uh, built in three optional one-year extensions. And that is if it's mutually agreeable. And, uh, being that this contract, the original contract is, 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 uh, uh, going to be terminating. Robbie's Grading was asked if they wanted to continue with this very first one-year extension, and they said yes, they would. And have signed the extension. And so really the request is that we, we stick with this contractor. It's the same, uh, unit price where they were the little bidder back in two thousand twenty, uh, which is a hundred thirty-two dollars per, uh, ton of material. Uh, removed from these properties. So, um, the request is that we, uh, stay with Robbie's Grading for this one-year extension. Any questions?
I'll see none, motion please.
What moves to adopt resolution number one, two, two, seven, one, dash, one, one, zero, two, two, one. A resolution authorizing a first contract extension and addendum to the city of Oak Creek, two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one private property maintenance contract.
Next, second, all call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Tomlin.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item thirteen is also engineering and its consideration of a motion to enter into a professional service agreement with a cost up to eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. With Edgerton Contractors, Inc., for professional services to provide engineering, survey, grading, erosion. And dust control and site management during the soil import, the city's Lake Vista North properties at eighty-seven thirty, eighty-nine forty. And ninety-ten South Fifth. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to get my screen here situated. Okay, so, uh, thank you very much, Mayor. So this is, um, up on the screen, you will see the property that, uh, that this project, uh, is referring to. This is sometimes referred to as the former Peter Cooper property. Um, now, many years ago, it changed hands. Um, the city acquiring the three, uh, easternmost parcels shown in blue. And, um, Wispark, uh, acquiring the, that which is in yellow. And then of course, everyone's aware that there's a pending transaction with that, that property. Um, however, what we are talking about, uh, tonight is, um. Uh, work that will be needed to take place in two thousand twenty-two. To, uh, manage a large volume of clean soil that is going to be, uh, hauled into the, uh, the city properties in blue. Uh, two hundred and eight thousand cubic yards, that's twenty thousand truckloads. So, uh, quite, quite the endeavor here. Um, and, uh, that soil is coming from, uh, a large retention, stormwater retention pond project that MMSD is undertaking. And, um, uh, thanks to the good work of Sue Women, who is here, in case there's any questions, she's in the audience here. Um, was able to, uh, uh, secure a deal, uh, in a governmental cooperative agreement in which, uh, MMSD has specified. In, in their project that the soil is to come to this property. Um, and that's, that's, it's, it's really quite, um. Um, uh, you know, quite the get for, for the, the city. Um, because this is just really millions of dollars of soil that will be brought at no cost. And something that is really needed on a site of this size, uh, as we try to get it clean soil capped. Um, and, uh, ready for redevelopment. So at any rate, what, uh, what we need to do on our end is we need to have a contractor that will be, uh, at the ready. And will manage this soil as it comes in, because it, it, it's going to be coming in at varying rates. Uh, depending on what's happening on the excavation end, uh, depending on what's happening with the weather, um, just a lot of factors. And so basically, um, what we did was then, so we put out a, an RFP, a request for proposals for, for, uh, professional services. That are, that's going to, um, move this soil, grade it, uh, uh, to drain as a grading plan that, that it, that it's going to be, uh, graded to. Um, and then clean soil cap these properties. There's going to be a large excess of material then that will have to be, um, uh, graded and formed into a, a, a stockpile. Uh, and that soil will be used on future projects that are planned for this property. And so we, we, uh, we did get four proposals. Uh, we evaluated them on, um, just their thoroughness or their understanding of the project. Um, their qualifications, their, their, their staffing, um, their experience in the city, uh, projects. And, um, their awareness of working on this, uh, on this property, which is, you know, a bluff top property. Uh, so there are considerations for stability, uh, moving large volumes of soil, heavy equipment, uh, compacting the equipment. Um, you know, what, what are your, what is your plan as the contractor, uh, to be safe and that, that, uh, we're not doing anything dangerous out there. And, uh, and then of course, there is the cost component. You know, what is your range based on what you see this effort being? What is your range, uh, of cost that, that, that you would expect this, uh, to be? Once, once this work is done, and this work can take place over the course of an entire year. Um, that, that is my understanding of the timeframe of the MMSD project. So. Um, so those are all the factors. And we had the RFPs, we brought them in engineering, read through them, uh, scored them. Uh, came up, came up with a composite, uh, score sheet, which is, uh, included here in the, uh, yeah, with, with the report. And then of course, with, with the, uh, the costs. So, um. Basically, um, we were in agreement that, uh, Edgerton Contractors was, had not only the lowest, uh, but projected cost. Uh, but they also scored the highest with the understanding of the, uh, the work that needs to happen out there and how it need, and how it needs to happen. And, and what is their preparedness? Um, because you really need to be flexible on this. I mean, they may get a call saying, hey, we're hauling today, we got, we, we, something cut loose and we're going to be hauling dirt and better be ready to, uh, uh, to accept it. Uh, and, and not slow us down. So, um. We would, uh, we would, you know, our, our request then is that Edgerton, that, that the city enter into this, uh, agreement with, uh, this, uh, professional services agreement. Um, and the, uh, uh, not to exceed without authorization, eight hundred seventy-eight thousand dollar, uh, agreement. So, I mean, Edgerton has done a lot of work, not only on this site, toward the city, they've done survey, uh, for us. They've done engineering, um, and they've done some grading work out there. Uh, they did some preparatory work last year as we were, as we were first shaping up for this, for this large soil import. Um, they have also worked on the Lake Vista South properties over the past, uh, two decades. They've done, they, they stabilized the bluff for the Epic properties. They did the clean soil capping across the Epic and the Tupent properties back in, uh, two thousand twelve. And then they constructed, uh, our Lake Vista Park for us in two thousand seventeen. So they have done a lot of work on the lakefront, they know those properties, uh, inside and out. And we just are very confident they would do a good job for us.
Hey, thank you, Mike. Um, comments, Steve?
Um, I know I made a comment, uh, when we first talked about this. This immense, like Mike said, this immense gift that we got from this, uh, saving millions of dollars, uh, for the city. And I would just, uh, like to suggest to Leslie that this was something that. And I would just like to suggest to Leslie that this is something that I think the public ought to know, not so much just the project, but the fact that the amount of money, the work that, you know, that, that we, that was put in by staff to, to save money for the, for the city. I mean, that's just a remarkable gift that we got. So thanks for the hard work and appreciate it.
Sure. Alderman, Dukneak, third district. Nothing related to the, the services contract, but the site itself, is there an opportunity to visit the site? I mean, we've had so much discussion about this. I think I know where it is, but I, I have no idea, you know, to try to explain to people what's going on there. And I go, that's a great question. So, or is it safe now? Saying that there's a lot of movement that may be taking place there, is it safe to go there?
We don't encourage it because it, it is fenced off. And I mean, we, we see people walking across that property, but there are, it's irregular terrain. There are old abandoned structures that if you don't know where they are, you could find yourself down inside of them. So we, there, there's been work that has secured these where, where we found them, but...
Did you want?
I can drive them out.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah. I mean, and any of, any of you folks that would like to visit the site, Sue would happily give you a tour because, I mean, it is, it's accessible with the, with the city four-wheel drive vehicles.
And obviously, at some point, this is all being, although the bluff stabilized and soil capping, because we're going to develop that somewhere down the road, Andrew, right? I mean, it's part of the, the grand lakefront vision.
Yeah, so the common council included in its proposed 2022, yeah, 2022 budget, I'm already on the 2023, 2022 budget and $80,000, I believe, service contract or the ability for the city to go through an RFP process to really establish that vision for the north bluff area, the continued development of the south bluff and, and further south of Lake Vista, but more importantly, I think the connective tissue between those parts of the lakefront. And that is more specific to the public amenities and the, and the public access to the lake more so than, than necessarily the private development. And as the council is aware, you know, we're under contract for the, the yellow portion here. And if we consummate that deal, that's, that's probably more so the principal development property. The bluff area has really been designed in, in such a way and will be designed in such a way that the vast majority of that blue area along the lake is, is hopefully, if we do it the right way, is for the public's benefit in the long term for generations to come.
Andrew or Mike or someone, what's the fifth property LLC property on the map?
So that, that's still privately owned land. That was the old High Night facility, which was fertilizer production, I believe. The buildings had been removed probably about seven, eight years ago, just remains vacant at this time.
Here, just another comment or two if I, if I may. You know, obviously, this partnership with MMSD is imperative to the success of this project and obviously saves millions of dollars, as has been discussed. But just, just a reminder here, this, this project was what our engineering staff was working on in their spare time the last couple of years while we were planning Lake Shore Commons. So, I mean, this is, this is a monumental effort by a, a very small team of very, very competent professionals we have in this building. So I definitely want to do acknowledge that. Now, this is just the beginning of the work, of course, as we, we kind of joke about. But also an acknowledgement here, and Mike, Mike alluded to something I wanted to comment on, and many folks in this room have been here much longer than I have and really understand this partnership more than I do. But this is a partnership with Edgerton, their local firm here in the city of Oak Creek. They have been integral to our remediation and redevelopment success on the lakefront. And I think it, you know, I think their desire to be a continued community partner was reflected in these bids that you see. And I think that's really important to acknowledge. There, there's more work coming down the road. We've had a ton of in-kind, I guess, to put it nicely, consultancy ship on the part of Edgerton when we're looking at things like the bluff stability project itself and things we might do along the, the toe of the bluff. It was just really good to have a, a local partner in Edgerton that, that really, really helps us out and, and gives us a lot of good guidance along the way. And it's good to see that they had a competitive bid. But again, I think that partnership is really inherent in, in the bids we've received here from, from this great firm. So thank you to them.
Thank you.
I get anything from?
Mike or Sue, either one. Is there any, like, preliminary grading being done before this soil arrives or, or does that happen in conjunction with the soil?
So yes, there is. There is, you recall that last fall, there was a good amount of preparatory work as this soil was, as it was contemplated and, and being planned on when it was going to arrive. And the site was left in a, a, probably, I guess I would say about an 80% subgrade configuration, such that it drained, but we did leave an area, a fairly large area offset from the, the main stormwater intake. We left that undisturbed, so that area would need to be prepped and, and to get us to what we would call subgrade before the clean soil capping can, can begin. And Sue, if you had anything to add?
No, we did the majority of it last year. We just have to tidy it up this year. As Mike said, we left the center area vegetated to prevent erosion, so we will need to work on that. But that will have to take place before the MMSD soil comes in over the next, like, well, over about two to four weeks.
What about the timeline on the MMSD project? Has it started already?
No, currently that's, their bids are due on November 18th, and I think they'll probably want it either at the November or December commission. And from there, they have 45 days to get under contract. So if weather holds, they may be starting in, probably hauling in like late December, early January, late January, somewhere in winter.
Thank you.
I was just going to say that I, going back to having the resource, Mayor, you, you talk about it at every council, I mean, the resources that, you know, we have working here and the staff. I mean, the work you guys put into this and, and going after this contract and the MMSD, I mean, that's something to talk about and brag about. So thank you for everyone's hard work.
Yeah, and just to kind of wrap this up, Andrew made a great point I was going to mention as well. Edgerton is a local contractor. They've done a lot of work with us and these were all quality contractors, without a doubt. But to be able to mobilize and be within Oak Creek really sets them apart and the work they've done is outstanding. So we got a great partner in that. Thank you for pointing that out. Mike, I think you were being just a little bit modest when you went, yeah, this is a good get for us. This is a monumental get and you guys are a big part of it. You, Sue, and your entire staff, thank you very much. Working with MMSD, we've been very fortunate and lightning actually struck twice here for us. Not only did we get this dirt, when they dug out the tunnels in the Marquette interchange, we received all that dirt down at the lakefront as well. That was trucked down to the fourth district, inconvenience some residents down there. Sorry about that, Mike, but it's a necessary evil for the redevelopment. Not only that, our staff also worked with DOT as they're going to reconstruct Ryan Road and timing on this was imperative that we didn't change a trucking route. So kudos to, to the city engineers that worked that out for us as well. There's so much behind the scenes here. This is absolutely just great. I know it's not always exciting talking about dirt, but when it comes to this, this is really, really big for Oak Creek going forward. So thank you to staff and, and everything you guys do. Do appreciate it. And Mike, as I said, at MMSD, Sue hit it right on the head. Those bids are coming out, will be at the MMSD council in November. I would seriously expect them. And this dirt is actually coming from Sixton Howard. They're putting in a retention pond there right behind Arrow Steel. So.
Do you hear from the?
Yeah. And, and this is all clean soil. It's very clean soil coming in. So, but January is probably the, the timing mark for you. So. Nothing else? We can motion on, I lost track where we were. 13, thank you.
I want to make a motion to enter into a professional services agreement at a cost of up to 878,000 with Edgerton Contractors, Inc. for professional services to provide engineering, survey, grading, erosion, and dust control and site management during soil import to the city's Lake Vista North properties at 8730, 8940, and 9010 South Fifth Avenue.
Dukowski, a second. All call.
Alderman, Dukia.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukia.
Aye.
And item 14 is our license committee, and I will turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the contents of the common council report for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns?
All right, seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the November 2nd, 2021 License Committee Report.
Dukneak, second. All call.
Alderman, Tolman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukia.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Oh, comments, questions, motion, please?
Gail, move to approve the October 27th, 2021 Vendor Summary Report in the total amount of $300,446.94.
Dukowski, a second. All call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukia.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Just before we adjourn, keep in mind Veterans Day is coming up very quickly. It'll be November 11th. The city ceremony this year will be at the Oak Creek Performing Arts Center near the high school, and it will kick off at 1 o'clock Saturday, correct?
That is correct. Doors open at 12:30. Ceremony begins at 1 o'clock PM.
So if you could, please turn out, honor your veterans, and of course, on the 11th, please take a moment to recognize those that serve and protect our freedom. So if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn, please. Kirkowski will make a motion to adjourn. Oracle, second. All call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukia.